Good morning. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, once again will assemble ourselves to do diligence for the city of Cartersville. We ask you to come down, direct us, and guide us, that we be pleasing in your sight. We ask these blessings, and all blessings, in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olmer on the roll, please.
Carrie White, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Steppen, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Ralph, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Taffrey, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from November the fifteenth. And council, you've had these well in advance, had an opportunity to review them. Now would be the opportunity to make any corrections to those minutes, or if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. We have a series of appointments this morning. I'll turn it over to Ms. Brock to handle those duties, please.
Yes, sir. This is the annual reappointment of Assistant Municipal Court Judge Jay Choate, as required according to the statute, and your approval of this reappointment is recommended.
Okay. I guess we vote for it, and then we do the swearing in. Is that what we do?
Yes, and we're going to swear in Carrie and Jay together.
Okay, very good. So, council will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please.
Okay, thank you. This is the annual reappointment of Municipal Court Judge Harry White, as required according to the statute, and your approval of this reappointment is recommended as well.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and I will turn it over to Ms. Olmer to handle those swearing in duties.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you for serving our city.
Mr. George, I enjoyed your speech yesterday.
Well, thank you, thank you.
That's the first time you've heard that, isn't it?
Yeah. Both of them booed me in Anthony Lee.
All right. Ms. Brock, if you'll please continue with the next item.
Yes, the current terms of Ralph Sonny Miller, Tommy Strickland, and James Jarrett of the Joint Cartersville-Barto County Regional Industrial Development Authority will expire on December 31st of this year. They would like to continue serving if reappointed. Their new terms would expire December 31st of 2022. Your approval of these reappointments is recommended.
Okay. Any discussion on this item, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. The current terms of Ladonna Jordan, Beth Tilly, and James Jarrett serving on the Barto-Cartersville Joint Development Authority will expire on December 31st of 2018. They would all like to continue serving, and if reappointed, their new terms would expire December 31st of 2022. Your approval of these reappointments is recommended.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, I believe.
Yes. The current terms for Jennifer Wiggins Matthews and Sean Dervis on the CVV Board will expire December 31st of this year as well. They would like to continue serving if reappointed, and their new term will expire December 31st of 2022. Your approval of these reappointments is recommended as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'll just, just a comment on these last three appointments in particular. We got a number of people in our community that serve. These are volunteer positions that take time from their professional days to give their time and talent to the city and have a tremendous impact on what we do here. So, just want to thank them for their continuing to service to our city. The next few items, I'm going to be recusing myself, so I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Cooley to handle those items.
At this time, we'll look at a public hearing and a zoning annexation request. First off, the zoning.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council. This is an annexation and zoning request. It is a second reading. The Savoy Auto Museum is looking to add a couple additional acres to the site they are currently developing. With that, it was properly advertised and posted, and Planning Commission did recommend approval of this annexation and zoning. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Comments? Questions? Now, the annexation.
Nothing additional to add, Mayor Pro Tem, and again, was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
Are there any public comments? There is a motion on the floor for zoning approval.
I make a motion to approve the zoning and the annexation.
No one in town?
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Now, there's a motion for zoning annexation.
I make a motion for the annexation as well.
I'll second that, officer.
So, move. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is going to move down to item contract agreement with the auto museum.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. This is an agreement between the City of Cartersville and Anvers regarding the permit for the new auto museum. It is requested that council approve the agreement and any related documents to be signed. It's an identical agreement that was set in place with the Booth Museum as well as Telus. It weighs permit fees, taking into consideration the size of the museum. The museum will be responsible for the inspections, and they will turn in all proper documentation to the planning and development office, and your approval of this agreement is recommended.
Any comments?
I make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So, we go back to the normal order.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley, for handling that for us. The next item is SU-18-06. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this is SU-18-06. This is additionally a second reading of this request. The property is located at 306 Johnson Street. The applicant, J.C. Waters, is looking to expand non-conforming use. There's an existing used car lot. He's looking to expand it further up Johnson Street on the adjacent lot, which is under his ownership. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading, and Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. And just to reiterate what we had in the first reading, just because this, if this special use permit were to be approved by council this morning, the development standards would still need to be brought up to the code. There'd need to be paving there. They'd need to follow all buffing rules. There's still, so even if we pass this, there's still some work to be done to get that in order to be used.
Yes, they would have to submit for the city for a review and approval of a site, for their site layout, to look at drainage and other aspects of the development regulations.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. And if there being none, I'll open up a public hearing relative to file case SU-18-06, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU-18-06, and turn it over to council for their consideration. Is there any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is SU-18-07. Again, Mr. Manino, if you'll give us the rundown of that.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a special use permit request at Seven Dixie Avenue, at the corner of Dixie Avenue and Forest. The property is currently zoned MU, multiple use. In the MU zoning district, drive-through restaurants are not allowed, but restaurants are allowed. So, the special use permit request is to allow a drive-through for the proposed facility located on this property. It's a proposed facilities restaurant. Since the first reading, from my understanding, the applicant has met with an adjacent neighbor to the rear of the property, but I'll let them explain that. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Randy at this time? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Manino. I'll open up a public hearing relative to file case SU-18-07, and ask anybody who wishes to speak for or against to step forward at this time, and please give your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jeff Watkins here on behalf of the applicant, 128 West Cherokee Avenue, Cartersville, Georgia. As was indicated by Mr. Manino, the applicant and the applicant's realtor has had meetings with Mrs. Brooker, who spoke in opposition at the Planning Commission meeting and the first reading, and they have reached an agreement. They don't have a signed contract yet, but they have reached an agreement regarding the purchase of the 55 by 50-foot notch property. The applicant asked the engineer to redraw the site plan, to incorporate that, and to incorporate all the items that'll be in the contract with Miss Brooker to address her concerns. Those are a five-foot landscape buffer in front of the eight-foot wood fence that'll be built around the residential property there that joins this site, and I think her concerns have been addressed. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions besides that, but intended is to go ahead and buy that. There's still some variances that will need to be done, that this addresses the concerns she has in regards to the site. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Watkins? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this public hearing for SU-18-07. Anybody wish to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And I'll close the public hearing relative to that. And just, just a note that, as Mr. Watkins had indicated, you know, any agreement relative to the back half of that property regarding fencing and buffering, that's, that's really an issue between the two private parties. It's certainly not something that, that we consider, like what kind of trees and what kind of any of that. Obviously, they'll have to follow design standards from the city, and then if there are any variances, that'll go through the board of zoning affairs. So, again, the task we've got this morning, the issue before you is the allowance of the drive-through in that, and that's the cause for the special use. So, that being said, is there any discussion on this item?
I would just say, thanks for work, your client working with the neighbor. That's a, that's good. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Like win-win situations. If, any other discussion or comments? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, you're a busy guy this morning. We've got SU-18-06.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. The next one is proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Again, this is a second reading. In the zoning ordinance, this will provide for a couple sections, definitions for microbreweries and distilleries. It also provides for placement in the zoning ordinance under certain zoning categories where they should be allowed with special use permits, and additionally, it provides for standards for which that special use permit would have to be, they would have to be adhered to. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of these proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All right. Hearing none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second piece of that is the alcohol text amendments. Randy?
Yes, thank you again. And hopefully, this will be my last item today.
I think you got one more, but we're just as tired of hearing from you as well, so I'll continue.
With that, we did, with the changes to the zoning ordinance, we also have to make changes to the alcohol ordinance regarding those particular uses that we, were previously changed in the zoning ordinance, microbreweries, distilleries. Additionally, Keith had also requested the Alcohol Control Board make changes to the amendment violation in fines and probation guidelines in the ordinance, alcohol ordinance, to have it comply with state law. With that, Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or discussion for Randy on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, this is your last item for the day, unless you choose to add anything else.
About that, this particular item. As you're, you are aware, the city does have an impact fee ordinance on the books. However, we have reduced the impact fees to zero. With that, state law does require us to annually update our five-year short-term work program and capital improvement element. It's an annual exercise we go through now, and we go through, provide, get information from all the departments based on their five-year program. We send a draft copy to the Department of Community Affairs and the Regional Development Center. With that, there's a 30-day process from there, then we'll bring it back before you for final approval in January. The state requires us to have a transmittal resolution approved by council to forward this to, to them, and with that, we do recommend approval and authorization of a transmittal resolution, so we can send these documents to the state agencies that are required to review it.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Randy on this item? All right. As part of this, we're required to have a public hearing for the capital improvements element, so all right now, I will open up a public hearing for that capital improvements element. Ask anybody who wishes to step forward, speak for or against, just step forward at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council. And again, this is a resolution to, to transmit this draft application to the Department of Community Affairs and the Regional Development Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're, Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the next several, is what you're going to do, your best Randy Manino impersonation with, not quite as many, but go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we have, the city has received an updated contract from Courtware Solutions. Courtware Solutions is the software that we use in the municipal court to process payments made from the court cases and for all the traffic citations. The agreement is being updated to reflect Courtware's new pricing structure. We currently, they, they currently charge $3 per citation. They will not be going to $4 per citation. The $3 change has not been changed since 2005, when we originally went with Courtware. The citation fee is added to the cost of each citation. It's paid by the, paid by the defendant, so there's no impact to the budget whatsoever. Legal has reviewed the contract and made recommendations for improvements, and those improvements were, were indeed made. I am asking for the, I'm recommending the approval of the contract as presented, and ask that the mayor be allowed to sign any and all documents regarding that contract.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Tom.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, the city completes an annual MEAG questionnaire, and part of that questionnaire is actually completed by our audit firm. Mauding and Jenkins, as you know, is a new audit firm, and they've been asked to complete the questionnaire. And this year, in return, they're asking the city to approve an engagement letter that gives them the go-ahead, essentially, to complete the questionnaire. I recommend the approval and ask that the mayor be authorized to sign the engagement letter. This also was run by counsel, a legal counsel, and was approved by a legal counsel.
Thank you. Any discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my final item is a, an invoice from Cogsdell. Cogsdell is the city's third-party utility billing software, is a sole-source provider. The invoice is $78,283.05, and I recommend approval of the Cogsdell invoice for payment of $72,000, $73,000, I'm sorry, $78,283.05.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Who's up next? Mr. Jones?
Good morning, everybody. Today, we've got our rehab project of some more filters at the water treatment plant. Specifically, we will address filters 1 through 3 and 7. As we talked about in the work session, filters 1 through 3 are original equipment filters. They were installed in 1971. Filter number 7 is a '74 model, so we have gotten some good service out of those. We feel like it's time to address that. We did have, several years ago, we did have a filter that failed, so we know that these things are a little long in the tooth, and we'd like to make sure we stay out ahead of that. The project was bid on, or bids were opened on November 14th, and the low bid came from heavy constructors in the amount of $928,000. I would ask that you would authorize the mayor to execute all these, to all documents subject to approval by the city attorney. We do not have the contracts in hand, but expect to have them shortly.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Ms. Bolander.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the annual renewal for Everbridge, our mass communication system. The total is $6,825. It is a budgeted item and recommended for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Rebecca on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council. This item is for one of our GeoBond projects, one of our last ones, and it's for the Dillinger Park walking trail, which, by the way, is our most-used facility of any facility we've got. It's, it's our Dillinger Park walking trail. We have tested a product from Slate, Rockmart Slate Company, a trail mix, and we've asked for feedback from our citizens that use the trail, and we have nothing but positive feedback on it. So, I'm requesting an amount not to exceed $9100 for the purchase of 650 tons of Rockmart Slate trail mix. This would also include working on the Dillinger Park trail, the Sports Complex trail, and the Leek Mounds interpretive trail. The last two trails, that would be paid for out of our maintenance budget. But that's, my recommendation is to approve not to exceed $9100 from Rockmart Slate Company.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order. Is there?
No, we're just discussing amongst ourselves.
Well, this is a public meeting, so.
Motion to approve.
Is there anything you'd like to say to the class?
I, I'm just kidding.
Second.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second?
That's what we're discussing. Who was going to do?
Great. We're glad you all worked that out. All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And, yes, Mayor and Council, our, our next item is for sports lighting, and we legally advertised these bids and posted them, and received three bids back, and I am recommending the low bid from West Georgia Lighting in the amount of $462,023. That, I'm sorry, in $23.0, and that is for the lighting of Sports Complex Fields 3 and 4, the Dillinger Park Tennis Courts 6 and 7, Dillinger Park Tennis Courts 13 and 14, and Dillinger Park Basketball Courts, which will complete all the, the removal of the wooden poles at Dillinger Park, with the exception of the ones that are around the, the walking trail. And, in, in doing this, this is going to leave approximately $77,000 remaining in our GeoBond funds, and that would be up to, to council, what they wish to do with that remaining funds. But West Georgia Lighting, an amount of $462,023.05 is my recommendation to the city council.
Okay.
And I also ask that mayor be allowed to sign any and all related documents related this item.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Chief Carter, you have the next item, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Respectfully requesting permission to proceed with the repair of our mobile air light unit. This unit was purchased by you in 2011, and the electronic boards have gone out on this unit. We need to retro those and have them completely replaced, for a total of cost of $6,780. This will be done by a sole-source provider of MES, and it is covered underneath our budgeted maintenance funds.
Okay. Any questions for the chief on this?
What's the difference in a purchase of a new one?
Purchase of a new unit's $80,000. We actually checked into it, and we still have a lot of life left this unit. So, while it is a significant repair, it's definitely warranted compared to purchase of a new unit.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Chair wanted to add a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Mr. Porta, you've got the final two for us today.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The first one is One Beacon Insurance Deductible. We had a couple claims that are still outstanding from a couple years ago. Total due at this point in time is $8,566.84, and recommend it's for approval.
Okay. Any questions for Dan on this? Not a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Please continue.
The next item is for our gas department facility. We have a change order deduct in the amount of $369,732 this time. Excuse me. Part of that is for the fuel station that we brought to you several months ago, and that we're doing ourselves, contracting it directly. The generators and pads, we're going to contract that. Once the building's up and running, we've gone through electrical. We want to test it out and see what size, because we think that the contractor or architect are oversized that, so, and something that meets our needs. And there was an add conduit for the fuel canopy in that number, but the total, total deduct, recommend approval, was $369,732, and anything the mayor have to sign that, if it's approved by the city council.
Okay. Questions or comments or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dan, thanks for squeezing those pennies and finding some, finding ways to reduce the cost for that. Do have one last thing. Mr. Hasselbrock, please step to the podium. I don't know how many years you've been back there rolling your eyes at everything I've done, looking at your watch halfway through the meetings.
Twelve, to be exact.
But this is your last meeting, and you've done a wonderful job for us, and I just wanted to haul you up here and let you give any parting shots to anybody else that's in this room.
Other than Tom, I can't think of anybody. But it's, it's been a good ride for me. It's been a good place to work. I've been surrounded by good people, and Cartersville doesn't realize, I don't, I don't really think they realize the quality and the talent of people they have working here at the city, and that's, you know, that just makes my job easier, makes your jobs easier, and I, I do want to acknowledge that. You know, it's, it's not in just one department, it's, it's in a lot of departments, and, but I've enjoyed my, my time here, and if you could, one thing I have to suggest, if you could work on the pension updates, I'd appreciate it.
It's become increasingly more important for you now, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, thank you for your leadership and for your contributions and for, for all you've done for us, and we wish you well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come forth, council, this after, this morning, though? Of course, shall we move this to the morning? The city, the Carter- The city, the Carterville Exchange Club Parade is this evening, and so, I don't know if anybody's got to get out of work early to get out of the traffic that's going to be pending, but it's a large parade, and we appreciate them putting that together, and weather's going to be just fine. It'll be just a little bit cold, but, and again, the other thing that's always amazing to me on this, and I'm going to Diane Tate-style rant, is that, you know, unfortunately, a lot of people come out to these parades and treat it like, like there's no garbage cans out there, and I know we've got plenty of them, but one of the things that's amazing is to drive through after the parade and see the mess that's left behind, but also to come through town about six o'clock in the morning, and it looks like the parade never even happened, and that's the result of a number of city folks that are out cleaning up well early in the morning to make sure that our city looks nice, and we appreciate the efforts, not only of public works, but, but all the departments that work throughout this, public safety and, and everybody else. So, we'll just hope there's no train stop that impede this, but that being said, come on out and enjoy the parade, and chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Cheers for.